All right. So I'll call this meeting of the Select Board on September 14th. Imagine that, we're halfway through September. By roll call, please.
Kilcoyne, here.
Smith, present.
Grant's in here. And Alda Ken.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So, have you gentlemen had a chance to read the minutes?
Yes. I read them. I would like to motion to approve the minutes, the Town of Sterling Select Board of August 31st, 2022, as written.
I will second it.
Any further discussion, Mr. Kilcoyne?
There being none.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Smith, aye.
Grant's an aye.
Kilcoyne, aye.
Yeah. You are aye. All right. And now, very exciting, that we have some appointments for the Finance Committee. And, Mr. King, would you like to speak to this, as far as appointments?
Good evening, Select Board. My name is Joseph King. I am the Vice Chair of the Finance Committee, and I am a member on the Capital Budget Committee. We are fortunate enough to have three volunteers that put in their application to join Capital Budget Committee and FinCom that I'm bringing forward tonight. That would be Liz Pape for the Capital Budget Committee, Paul Austin for the Finance Committee, and George Handy, I don't think George is joining, he had another conflict tonight, he's also on the Finance Committee. The Finance Committee and the Capital Budget Committee held a joint session on September 8th last week, and in that, we met the candidates, we interviewed the candidates, we reviewed their qualifications, we asked questions, they provided answers, we moved forward with a nomination for each of the three, we then voted and approved them at the FinCom and at the Capital Budget Committee level. So tonight, we're bringing forward these three candidates, hoping that you'll view them positively and also approve if the reviews go well tonight, so.
Thank you. And before we have a chat with Liz or Mr. Austin, I just do want you to know that Jennifer Scalesy-Mullett, our Town Moderator, had reviewed all of what was sent to her about the candidates, and she said that she approves all of them. So, Liz, you want to give us a little bit of why you're doing this, other than you're crazy? Which, if anybody doesn't know Liz, she already knows that, so.
I've been a resident of.
Podium, please.
Liz Pape Elliott Road. I've been a resident of Sterling since 1989, and during that time, I volunteered in a variety of capacities, on the school board, on the council on aging, and now I'd like to work on the Capital Budget Committee. When I was working on the council on aging, I served as the treasurer, and we began providing monthly treasurer's reports in a format that I designed, I worked with Mr. Aponte, to make sure all of the warrant information was up to date. The reason why I'd like to serve on the Capital Budget Committee is to continue that knowledge of finances for the town. I feel that the economic climate may be changing over the next few years, and I'd like to be a part of the deliberations on how the best, how the town can best spend its money. Any questions?
Liz, are you still on the council on aging, or?
Yes, my term expires on June 2023, so that precludes me from serving on finance.
Okay.
So that's why I volunteered for Capital Budget.
Okay, so you shouldn't have any conflicts, and are you going to renew on the council on aging?
No, no. Council on Aging now has term limits, and so people serve two, three-year terms, and then if they wish to renew, it requires a vote by the council. And I think that fresh blood is always important on various town boards, and so I have served my two terms, and I'm moving on.
David? I just want to thank you for stepping up and volunteering. As many know that we're in short supply of volunteers such as assault, and it's extremely important in a town government such as we have, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Sometimes I think Liz's middle name is volunteer. She didn't mention that. Before she did get on the COA, she also volunteered at the Senior Center, just as a volunteer.
Yeah. We worked through that amazing transition period when we were going into a new building. We need, needed lots of volunteers for the front desk and for the kitchen, and I was the volunteer coordinator that did that, so I was able to hook them in.
I appreciate you stepping up and stepping in, Liz. Been waiting for it for a couple of years now, but, and I expect that after your resignation or your term is done at the COA, that Mr. King will have you at his side on the finance, so.
Thank you.
I would take a vote, I would make a motion that we approve Liz Pape as a member of the Capital Budget Committee.
Second.
Any further discussion, Mr. Kilcoyne? Okay. All those in favor?
Kilcoyne, aye.
Smith, aye.
Grant's an aye. Thank you, Liz. And does she still have to go down and take another ethics? You already did that for the COA.
She needs to be sworn in.
And sworn in.
Yeah.
All right. At some point, at the Town Clerk's Office. Okay, and then we have Mr. Austin. Paul is looking at a full-fledged member of the FinCom.
So, good evening. I'm Paul Austin, I'm from One Matthew Lane, and I've previously served on the IT Committee. In fact, I'm still technically on the IT Committee. We're kind of defunct, but I started participating in with the Sterling Government, and we're proponents of several different things, including the Lam, I think it's called Lamnet. So, we really wanted to provide high-speed Internet service, so we advocated for that amongst other projects to help bring Sterling up to more, using the cloud, using more efficient IT systems. But I also feel like with my background in business, I've had, I've managed software businesses in Europe, I've managed a number of other facilities. We moved, I moved here in 2001 with my family, and we moved away to Belgium for about three years, but we kept the house here because we love Sterling so much, so we came back, we keep coming back to Sterling. And now my kids both graduated from UMass, and I have more time, and I think I contribute more to Sterling if I was managing it from a, from a financial perspective, and I can bring my business knowledge and capital projects and expenses, and including how you can improve things through IT, and so I'd like to be able to do that.
Well, I think, oh, thank you for stepping forward, by the way, and I think, I remember you doing a nice job on the IT Committee when we were looking for an IT vendor, along with everybody else on that committee. I guess it needs to go on indefinitely, and we haven't had any, any issues really to speak of, which is a real good thing. But my only question was, just, just the availability during the, mostly during the winter months, when it really gets cranking in January, February, March, do you see any conflicts with time?
So I retired three years ago. So, a big part of the reason I'm here is my wife thinks I have too much free time, so in fact, I just came from golf at Blackstone.
Oh, Jesus.
So.
Meet your new best friend, also retired, also golf. And I'm looking for a line cook, if you're. Or bacon.
About the baking, but I could do, I could do some cooking.
Okay, I'll see you later.
In answer to my question, I was, I didn't hear when you said you retired, but.
I didn't bring it, I really didn't say that before.
He's afraid.
I usually get a lot of comments when I say.
The good news about being on finance, Paul, is you really can't be on another committee for a while, so.
I understand.
Good for you, good for you.
I do understand, I think I was advised, Joe advised me that, I would, if I am on the committee, the Finance Committee, I'd have to resign from the IT Committee.
Yeah.
I understand. Really broken out of vote. I miss all those meetings that we have.
I just want to thank you, Paul, for stepping up and volunteering. It's really important, and we all appreciate it.
Glad to do it.
You know, we kind of joke and laugh about the IT Committee being fun, but you guys did a lot of work to get us to where we are today.
We tried, we care.
I know. If Joe was on the committee, I'm not sure he would have given you the money you kept asking for, but, or maybe he would have. But really, I mean, maybe you don't feel as though you finished the job, but you set us on a good path, so I appreciate that. And I definitely appreciate you stepping in and stepping up for the Finance Committee. So I would entertain a motion to approve Paul Austin for the Finance Committee.
I will move that we appoint Paul Austin for the Finance Committee.
Seconded.
Any further discussion, Mr. Kilcoyne? All those in favor?
Kilcoyne, aye.
Smith, aye.
Grant's an aye. Thanks, Joe. Same thing, you'll have to take an ethics test and also go and get sworn in at the Town Clerk's Office at your convenience, or tomorrow.
Before the 28th. I'm flying out tomorrow, but I'll.
I'll do it by the 27th.
All right. So, is Mr. Pierce coming in tonight? I'm guessing not. What, you don't even know what I'm talking about? Who's Mr. Pierce?
I don't know.
Oh, I see, you want us to go to George Handy, even though he's not coming, okay. All right, so, again, Mr. Handy has, had been on the Finance Committee in the past, had some issues medically, didn't feel as though he could complete his term, resigned, but now is interested in coming back on the, on the Finance Committee. And as you can see, the Finance Committee definitely thought it was a good idea that he comes back, and Jennifer Scalesy-Mullett also approved of the idea of George coming back.
Yeah, I, I know that George did a real good job when he was, when he was there, and I saw him, I think, not too long ago, and he looked very good, he was very enthusiastic about getting back into a helping move for the town. I didn't realize it was going to be FinCom right away, but I'm glad he did a nice job, and I definitely, definitely agree with Joe King, Finance Committee, and the Town Moderator on this.
Mr. King has done the research and background, and I'm sure the candidate comes fully vetted, so.
Also, he was a longtime member of the Finance Committee in Princeton, so that's, that was somewhat attractive.
He was on the advisory board there for a dozen years or something.
A long time, yeah.
So it was, at the time, when he first got nominated, it was very attractive to the Finance Committee. So I would entertain a motion that we appoint George Handy to the FinCom.
Yeah, so moved.
Seconded.
Any further discussion?
None.
All those in favor?
Kilcoyne, aye.
Smith, aye.
Grant's an aye. And Joe, or Kama, could we reach out to Mr. Handy and also tell him about getting sworn in, and probably has to retake the ethics test, I don't know how many years he's been gone, two maybe.
Yeah, I'll check with him, and I'll reach out to everybody to make sure that they do the ethics and the swearing in.
Joe, does this leave any vacancies right now, or do we have one more?
We have, we have one additional vacancy on FinCom after this, and we have two vacancies still on CBC after this. So I'm advertising again, so.
Yes, you can keep going. Well, no fear, you know, Liz will be on the CBC with Lynn, and they, they know how to spend money. You'll be fine.
She'll be my number one recruitment.
Well, that's an interesting committee, actually, to keep an eye on, so. All right, thank you, and thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
And then we have Brian Pierce, so he's not coming? I'm not asking you, Joe, I'm asking Kama. Okay, all right, well, Brian's been on the Energy Commission or Committee for a few years now, and he's also a member of the Sterling Municipal Light Board, which is one of the qualifications to be on the Energy Commission, so I have no problems accepting a nomination or a motion to nominate Brian Pierce to the Energy Commission.
I'll move that we appoint Brian to the Energy Committee.
Seconded.
Any further discussion?
Only thing I'd like to say is to thank Joe Curden, who he's replacing on the Energy Committee. Joe has given just unknown hours of his time over the years to Energy, zoning board, and other committees over all the years I've been in this town, and we appreciate his, his time and effort and all he's brought to those positions, so I thank him.
Has also been underscored by Darren Borge as far as.
Right, Darren.
Brian beyond the energy.
No, that's it.
Anything, David?
Nothing.
Okay, then, we have a motion, we seconded it.
Kilcoyne, aye.
Smith, aye.
Grant's an aye. So, pretty sure that would be okay. All right, and now, as you all know, I try to have different committees and boards in to give us a little update on what they're doing, just so the general public can have an idea of what's going on. So tonight, we invited the Cultural Council with Roseanne Mapp, and let us know what's going on.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for letting we have the time here. My name's Roseanne Mapp, I'm chairperson of the Cultural Council, I've been for a few years now, and I just wanted to explain the process of the Cultural Council and what we've been up to. Both the Town of Sterling and the Massachusetts Cultural Council both support the Sterling Cultural Council. We provide monies to the arts and sciences, be it art, fiber, fiber art, sculpture, poetry, writing, gardening, music, just to name a few. We're in the process of, right now, we're in the process of having our second annual Art in the Park event. It will be October 1st with a rain date of October 15th. During this event, we'll be having music, we'll be having people sell their artwork over at Memorial Park. Last year, we did the Common and Memorial Park, but the Common is otherwise occupied this year, and we're happy to let them have it, so. Next year might be larger for the Art in the Park, which I hope so, but anyway, it will be at Memorial Park. We're proud to present to you our local artists, as well as some of them in the vicinity, so showing off what they can do, and hope you'll all take that into consideration and come out and join us. In addition, we will be presenting artwork from the children of Sterling at the 1835 Building on that same day. So the 1835 Building will be open for viewing of their artwork, as well as to see the building, I haven't seen the building yet really either myself, so it'd be kind of an interesting At this time, we're accepting applications to participate in Art in the Park, and if you're interested, please email ccfsterling@comcast.net, and we'll provide you with an application. Or if you'd like to demonstrate your talents at Art in the Park, let us know at the same email address, ccfsterling@comcast.net. Okay, so, the grant process, we're currently, yes?
Is there, is there a fee to participate in the Art in the Park?
No, there is no fee this year, because from what I understand, it is, no one is reselling, they're selling their own personal artistic wares, goods, so that that is not necessary. So it is a free event for those that participate. The grant process, we're in the middle of the grant process right now, it started on October 1st, I mean, September 1st, and will go through October 15th. This year, we're hoping to have a wide variety of applicants. In the past, we have had very few applicants, so it's, we've been funding the same people for a number of years. Doesn't mean that we won't fund them again, it just, maybe we won't level fund them, maybe we'll, you know, so the more people that apply, the better. So, if you wish to apply for a grant with the Cultural Council, you have to go to the Cultural Council. It's Massachusetts Cultural Council, it's www.masculturalcouncil.org/communitylocal-culturalcouncilprograms/applicationprocess. That's a lot. I know, I know.
Do you write that down?
But if you have questions, again, contact the people at the Sterling Cultural Council, which is ccfsterling@comcast.net. You can apply once a year for a grant, and right now, we're looking forward for, for year ending 2023. You may apply at, to different cities and towns throughout the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, not just Sterling, which is an interesting thing, which a lot of people do not, are not aware. The particular town or cities or towns that you also apply for a grant for will make the determination at that point whether they're going to fund you or not, just as Sterling would do the same. In the past, we've been providing funding for the Sterling Recreation Department, their concert series, the Senior Centers for their special programming, the Virginia Thurston Healing Heart programs, the Discovery Museum for Children in Need, Sterling Garden Club, the Sterling Arts Collaborative, the Sterling Historical Commission for Schoolhouse Projects on Route 36, on 62. We, at the Sterling Cultural Council, then review the grants, grade the applications, and determine who will receive grant funding for the upcoming year. We always try to select programs that Sterling citizenry will be able to attend and enjoy without much travel.
Now, do, do you apply to the Mass Cultural, and then they send it to the Sterling, or can you just apply to?
It's all, it used to be done that way, it's all done online now, so they have a program in which you, they set up all the parameters, you have to have a venue, you have to have a specific date, you have to have an advertising campaign ready to go, you have to have a program, what it's about, that sort of thing, and you put it all on the computer. And then I go on as a, as a Sterling Cultural Council member and go see who's applied. At that point, then, by, at the end of the year, the Council and I, or the Council collects all that data or goes on and sees who has applied and the parameters, and if they meet what, what we're looking for. Just because you apply doesn't mean that you're going to get funding, as I said, we've had funding from Springfield in the past and other places in Massachusetts, and for, for us in Sterling, we, if we're spending the money in Sterling, we really want the people of Sterling to be able to partake. So oftentimes, we don't fund somebody from another town or city that's too far for our tax, our citizens to travel.
How long is the process, Roseanne, between the application and the actual funding award? I'm just curious, this seems to be an ongoing thing every year, and.
It does, it's, it's, the COVID was, was peculiar, but on a regular basis, it's the granting process is, the application process starts on September 1st, it ends October 15th.
Okay.
Then, the Council reviews everything, the Massachusetts Cultural Council reviews everything, and we get it. So we get it, and we have to, we have to specify who we're granting, who's getting the monies from our monies by the end of, by the end of December. So usually by February, everything has gone out to the applicants.
How many, how many awards does the Cultural Council make every year, or processes, or vary? I mean.
In the past, we've done about 12, because we haven't received a lot of, a lot of, you know, I don't think a lot of people really even knew that the Cultural Council existed and what the process was, or that anybody could apply.
Yeah.
And so we've, with Art in the Park and a great committee, we've got the word out, and hopefully this year, we'll, we'll get some additional new grant requests.
It's impressive, I'm just, like, between now and then, is it, is it going to be advertising on like the electronic signboards out here and at the?
For the grant process?
For the Art in the Park, or is that?
Art in the Park, yes, we will be. We will be, that's, it's in the works.
Okay.
Yep.
What is the typical funding that's awarded? Please, Grant, is it in hundreds or thousands?
Thousands. This year, well, FY '23, the state has granted us $7,300, and the state, the Town of Sterling is $4,500, so add those together, so it's, it's a good sum of money to, to celebrate the arts, be they science, or, you know, our mission is to include sciences in nature, or, you know, we, we funded the garden club and, you know, things like that, because it isn't part of the, part of the mission.
That's good.
Do you think, Roseanne, for, for your Art in the Park on October 1st, you might be able to write up some of that, dot, 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 www, and have like maybe something at the park? You know, I know you had a table last year.
I did have that information last year, and I will have it again this year, yes.
It only gives them two weeks to do the application, but still, you know, last minute type thing. Anybody have any questions for Roseanne?
Do you use like QR code for that? Like a sign with QR code? It's not like.
Oh, Paul.
Give me some lessons.
That we can have to know. Basically.
Give me some lessons. So anyway, it's a good program, it's been going on in the Town of Sterling for, how long?
Five years.
More than that?
Seven years.
I think it's been about 10 or 12 years.
It's been, it's been a while, because we've got some funding from the Finance Committee, you know, a couple thousand dollars.
Yes, we were funded $3,500 for the longest time in the Town of Sterling, and this past year, they've, I requested $4,500, so, and we've been lucky enough to receive that, so thank you.
Are there any givebacks to the Town of Sterling on, on the grant awardees? Do they have to do anything for the town?
Absolutely. Well, they don't have to do anything for the town, but they provide information for the town, they, information, be it, you know, they have an art show, or there was an art show at the, the Old Schoolhouse on 62, so that gives back to the town in a different way, not monetarily, but, and that's what our aim is, is to, this money that we receive both from the state and the town, we want as many people of Sterling to be able to partake in these, these things that we fund, that we approve, so that it.
Good, it keeps it in town.
That's all right, Mr. Keepin' in Town, and, you know, as we, as I noted, in the Sterling Concert Series, Recreation Department, Concert Series brings in a lot of people, and that's been going on for quite some time, and we used to fund the First Church Theater Group, and hopefully they'll apply again, it's been a number of years now, and so if anybody has any questions, please feel free to contact us at ccfsterling@comcast.net. And we do have a webpage, not a webpage, but a Facebook page, and I do post on that, and that is Sterling Mass Cultural Council, as well as I do post on the Sterling Community Page as well, so.
I'll have a QR CVP.
All right. I know what they are, but I don't know how to do it.
Give me your smartphone.
Any other questions from, from anyone?
Did you get any coverage in the Meeting House Hill News?
Yes.
You did, good.
Yes, yes, but at a fee, at a large fee. But I do, I do write a column for the Meeting House Hill News, for the Economic Development Committee, and I try to put in as much information as I can, be it with DPW, the Cultural Council, or anything that's going on in town, so if you have anything that you want to broadcast, just let me know.
What about the landmark? I hear a landmark has been saved.
Yeah, good for them, that's great.
Do they give you any?
I mean, they, they were in trouble for a long time, so hopefully with a, have a new step forward now and...
A new lease on life.
Yes, yes.
And the good news there, too, not only did they get a new lease on life, but Jan Goetzman is working for them, which means that, and Jan's always been really good about covering Sterling and what goes on, so, okay, maybe not for you, but for me.
I see her a lot now on, on Facebook and stuff. That's great.
So that is good news, you know, she, she will pay attention to what goes on here, which is nice. Thank you, Roseanne.
Thank you.
Thank you, Roseanne. Very informative.
All right. And then the next thing on our agenda is they would like us to sign the state contract for weights and measures. You want to tell me a little bit about this bill?
Sure. So any, any weighing device, gas pump, certain scales, recertified, some towns have an individual that does it, a lot of towns, because one getting that certification ability is pretty tough, contracted through the state, so I think it's 2,400 and change, 2,422 would be our assessment for it.
It probably varies over a year, right?
Yeah, it was 1,200 or 1,400 the last couple of years, so it's gone up a little bit, but...
Pass that on to the, the business owners who use that as a...
Add some assessment to them, feed them.
I mean, the information, this is the first time from what I read in 10 or 12 years that the state is assessing all the communities for the weights and measures program, which I guess it's a way to generate some state revenue and...
Yeah, because they need it.
Revenue, but the state...
Keeping it down.
That's right. Well, that's, so, I don't know, so I guess my only question was, since we haven't been charged, I'm wondering, have we been charging any of the businesses that utilize the weights and measures program in town? You might not know that, being...
Not off the top of my head, I can find that out.
I bet we haven't, so...
Well, Kama has an answer to your question.
Only to say that we have been charged. We have been paying this for years, so it's just that's a new assessment and they, and they want every municipality to sign this new contract. So that's, it's not like we've never got charged before and now suddenly we are. We were charged before. It was built into the budget, actually.
I think it was 1,200 or 1,400.
But his question, Kama, John's question is, do we pass that along to the businesses?
I do not.
I find it hard to believe that we would do that. Vicky?
I know.
Have you seen any money from any of the, yeah, I don't think it's just something that you suck up and swallow.
But can, can confirm that, you know, your gallon of gas is a gallon of gas and, you know, the manufacturers that, you know, pound or, you know, whatever it is, is actually what it is.
It's fine, I just wasn't sure how that...
Just part of the business-friendly posture of Sterling.
That's right.
All right. David, I have a comment, but I'm not going to... David?
I got a few comments.
No, don't worry. We're trying our best, David.
All right, I'm going to say, they're going to weigh the trash bins?
Oh, good lord.
Oh, boy.
All right, I would entertain a motion for the board to sign off on the, the cost of the weights and measures as assessed.
I so moved.
Any further conversation, discussion? All those in favor?
Both agree.
Smith, I.
France and I. David, David, David. All right, so, so I did want to mention that Jan is back and working with the Landmark and I think that's a wonderful thing, especially for the town of Sterling.
It is.
Yeah. And then also, obviously, the big conversation has been the fair and what a success it was this year. And you can't thank the fair committee or all the volunteers that were there enough. It was an amazing turnout, not just for people, but for volunteers. And then for them to actually take the time also amongst all their work to recognize, they did a very well-deserved recognition of some longtime fair members, Don Jewett, who people in town refer to as Mr. Fair, Meryl Johnson, who always takes care of the horse and oxen pulls and all that, she's got her own little shed there, and then Joanne Strang, who wasn't able to participate this year, but has always taken care of the exhibit hall, and the fair committee took that time to recognize them when we opened. You got to do a special thank you to Sterling Municipal Light Department for their work on a nice, beautiful Saturday afternoon when the power went down for about two and a half hours, maybe three, and I think it was a conspiracy because I was on the information booth and on the microphone and I didn't get a chance to say anything. That's very sad, but anyway. I, I think it was a conspiracy between the light department, the fair committee, and the fire department, I feel as though, you know, which, which you got to mention, again, thanks so much to the fire and the police for, for all that they did over the weekend. Also, they were Johnny on the spot for just about everything. And then it goes without saying, we have to thank all of our town employees for participating in the dunk tank, because that's actually was a fundraiser for the fair. And, you know, so I, I know that David was in there and Patrice and Vicky and DPW people, et cetera, and so on. Somehow Bill and, and John escaped, as did I, but I had to work. These guys were fooling around. I had to work, so...
It's a way to call work, fooling around, I mean.
Well, you were fooling around.
I was lying.
I forgot. All right. So how about an update from you, Bill?
I'll start with, you know, a thank you to the fire, police, DPW, SMLD, all the town departments that did a part of, you know, border health and building department for their inspections, treasurers, collectors, for treasurer and collector for collecting the funds and whatnot, for making the fair a success, obviously, the fair committee, volunteers, vendors, everyone. In the next coming weeks, we'll have the little more drainage work and the paving up on Kendall Hill and Clinton Road, coming down the road there. I think it's going to start in the next couple of weeks. We did receive the final compensation study report and job descriptions. There's an attachment there, I'm not going to get too much into it, you guys, take a look at it today and I'll bring it back up next meeting for the step changes and whatnot. So just take a gander at that when you get a chance, talks about the step changes within there. I'll also bring all the job descriptions back to the department heads in the next couple of weeks to make sure that everything was changed appropriately in there. It's got the three-hole punch in it, it's a letter to the Army Corps of Engineers. Mr. Mackey reached out to Representative McGovern's office and they sent him in this direction to potentially look at some of the options for the drainage on Sweat Hill, All Ave area. So there is that letter that we can send off if you folks approve. Take a look at that. Also, in previous years, I guess we were involved in some PFAS litigation, so I guess there's another one potentially coming up, so I'll join a call on that Monday to see if that's something we want to join and then I'll bring it back on the next meeting. I think those are the three things up there. I'll let you talk about the Army Corps letter after that. The demo of the playground over at the school has been done. They should be getting that delivery of the new equipment this week, so they should hopefully be assembling it next week. What do we have? Thanks, Pond, I'm waiting for one more quote there. Monty Tech students are going to be working on the memorial wall, so we'd have to get a couple of things with them. They did the roof assessment, so we have to do some asbestos remediation, so that'll be part of the bid documents when we get those out. Obviously, you see some scaffolding and whatnot, they've been doing the masonry around the, the heat laters on the outside vents. It hasn't been noisy at all.
We bought that big bottle of weed, I don't know what the problem is.
And those are the, those are the big things right now. We're still working on the beach, so we've started getting some of the, the lower stormwater plans. We met with the conservation agents and chair, so the engineer can continue on with that and see where, where we're going to move forward and, and what we're going to do to try and get that done. And, you know, it looks like the lower stormwater management and tree cutting may, maybe where the DCR funds kind of get exhausted and we'll have to figure out what the next step is after that. Anything on that, Mr. Mackey?
Covering the wood, please. We click it.
Bill, is asbestos remediation, is, I, I heard you say it was part of the bid documents, but...
It's going to have to be added to them, yeah.
Will we have enough funding for that?
I think we should, well, we'll see what the estimate is, but we have, we're in good shape right now.
Okay. Anything else to us?
Nope. So the two things, if you want to either vote or agree to it, would be the letter for the Army Corps of Engineers to potentially do an assessment, investigation, whatever the term is that I'm thinking of that's not coming to mind, on the erosion control there.
All right. That's a, that's a good one.
Yeah, thank you, Dick.
Definitely worth a shot.
Bill for moving that one along that came out of nowhere.
That's all, Mr. Mackey.
He's part of the Corps of Engineers, so he might have put in a good word for us. I don't know. Thanks again.
Paul?
All right, so I would entertain a, a motion to approve, we, Hardwell, to move forward with the Corps of Engineers and hopefully some remediation of the Sweat Hill and All Ave drainage problem.
You make that motion, are you asking for a motion?
I just made it.
I second it.
All right. Any further discussion? David?
What is it?
All right, it's very nice to trust the town administrator. All those in favor?
Both agree.
France and I.
Smith, I.
Smith's I. All of us, I, I, I. Okay, anything else from you, Joe?
Officer, thank you.
Right? Miss Pape?
Officer.
Smith?
Okay.
Kama?
Good.
Richard?
Officer.
I'm getting there, crying on, did you notice I was going around my home? Yes, his map.
One thing I'd like to say is thank you, and thank you to the fair committee for putting on a fabulous fair, again, after a hiatus for, because of COVID. Also, I wanted to say that the, we hope that you'll partake in Artin Park on October 1st with a rain date of the 15th. And also, we're looking for new members for the Cultural Council, so if anybody is interested, please let us know at ccofsterling@comcast.net. I want to make sure people get that.
That's a little simple.
Yes, I am.
Yeah, yeah. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
All right. All right. I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So move.
One moment, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, David. I take it back.
I just have a few things that I'd like to go.
Yes.
I was reached by one of our residents with some concerns over the lack of a uniformed officer at the polls while school was in session. I understand there's a constable there, but they were concerned about the safety of the children, with people having access to the building with the students there. So I did reach out to Sean and he called Gary. In previous years, prior to COVID, they always had a uniformed officer while the school was open, so I'm not sure what the process is moving forward, but...
For election day?
For, yes. Normally the school was...
For the primary, yeah.
Yeah, normally the school was closed, but it was...
Not for the primaries, for the, for the election in November. The primaries, usually they are still in school. But there was a constable, I don't remember, now, now that you say that, a police officer also?
Yeah, Gary said that they used to have a uniformed officer there.
Yes, they did.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I just, I just want to bring that up, it was brought to me, so...
Well, we'll just have to let Kathy know that she's going to have to contact them also, as well as the constables, so...
Okay, that was number one. I didn't want to beat this debt, but the fair's success, it was a huge success. I sat in the Dunkin' booth for about an hour and a half. It was, it was entertaining, had a lot of fun with it. We raised a lot of money. I want to thank everybody that was involved in that, it was, it was awesome. Good day, good weekend. I went to the DPW last night for the meeting with some concerns over the trash bins. I'm sure everybody has seen what has blown up on some of the social media sites. I think Ryan's got a handle on dealing with things, there's going to be some concerns that residents have. It's new, so nobody likes change. I tried to explain to people that, give it some time, we'll work through these problems. And I'm sure Ryan is going to do the best he can to make everybody satisfied, to the best of his ability. And finally, next week, on Thursday, the 22nd, at the Royal Plaza Trade Center in Marlboro, the New England Public Works Expo is being held. So on Thursday from 8:00 to 10:00, the 22nd?
Yeah, he's the only one that has time to do anything with that.
So it's, it's a large event, it's, it's New England-wide, but the VOTEC schools from around the area with an hour's drive of Marlboro are going to be bringing in, they anticipate 100 students that they're looking to place on co-op programs. So, you know, the department heads in town and all towns around here. It'd be a great opportunity. We're actually, the, the town which I employed was setting a booth up for, it's basically for taking job applications. I've participated in this in several towns and it's a great opportunity for, for the young kids and it's a great opportunity for the town. And UMass Bay State Rhodes has a program, if these students are in the top 3% of their class, they, they go on a program through Bay State Rhodes and it's 100% reimbursable, so it costs the town zero to have these kids working in whatever department it is, whether it be, you know, the highway, the light department, or even, you know, some of the technical stuff.
Back to you, Adam. I did work on the highway when I was out there. I've been to the expo several times and, yeah, it's a, it's a good program.
Right, it's even, you know, somebody, they could find somebody to work in the library. There's, you know, there's no end to the opportunities for these, these young kids, so it's a great opportunity for, for the town and, and for the students to try to get young people involved.
Or they would have to get a booth.
Yeah, so if you would like to do that, or if Ryan would want to do it, I was going to talk to him last night, but I ran out of time, or you can share my table. They're just, we're going to have tables in a conference room and the kids are just going to be walking through. You know, my intention is put a couple of street signs up so they recognize the town. And if they're close enough to give us an application and if we can put them to work, we're going to. But we have, here, I mean, you have Lomester, Monty Tech, Miniman, it's not far away. There's, there's a whole bunch of schools. Asabet, right?
Asabet, yeah.
We could pull students from to...
Yeah, there's a lot of options.
So I'm just encouraging that, that's all, I'm throwing it out there. So that's all I have.
You're going to talk to Ryan about that?
I will talk to Ryan, I'll call him tomorrow.
Yeah, I do know, as far as the trash thing is, they're, they're going to work their best and we really have no purview over it except to, you know, support them in whatever they do. And like you said, people don't like change. When we changed things downstairs, people didn't like that, but now you don't hear much about it.
It's a model that works in other towns also.
It's a little trash pickup. Oh, yeah, my, yeah, I know a lot of people that have worked with it and they love it.
I've already talked to Ryan multiple times. He probably told you.
Well, you, you are keeping a close watch on it, I'm sure, because really, bottom line is we're going to save some money.
My, my dialogue with, with Ryan is you got to be careful about these things because I can remember, I don't know how many years ago, we tried to change the trash routine and it blew up. And my other observation to them is I don't think the recycling bin is big enough and I, I think it may have the opposite effect of driving people to throw recycling in the trash because the bin isn't big enough for the recycling. In these days of Amazon, it is like over the top with the amount of cardboard that comes to houses and...
Stop shopping, Joe.
What's that?
Stop shopping.
I already talked to Elizabeth, it's my daughter, okay?
Well, what I'm going to do...
Hey, I'm pulling back.
We don't generate a lot of trash at my house, so I'm bad.
Nor I.
Right, but Joe, here's a way to make a few bucks, especially in retirement, right? So you go across the street to those people that have five people at the house and say, "Five bucks a bag." Help yourself. You know? But don't you think, you know?
It's sort of being a line cook.
I, well, you know, think about that too. But one of my things with the recycle bins, I wonder if that is done, not, not by Sterling because it's the same everywhere, but is, is that, you would think that the reason that recycle bins are smaller is because they want you to rethink how you're living, you know, and your waste as far as, yes, Amazon boxes.
A recycle bin is the big one. And the trash bins, the small one.
Small one.
Yeah, they want you to think that way and that's the right thought process.
But you still don't think the recycle bins are big enough?
I don't think they're big enough.
Stop drinking so much soda, Joe.
So we are members of Watches that Recycles and they do recycle cardboard. And I'm not suggesting that everyone in Sterling be running down there because a lot of people have already said that's not feasible, but it would be a possibility to discuss with DPW if there were a collection area here in town.
That would be awesome because it used to be great when the DPW had the cardboard recycling there.
You know what was really fun is when they had to dump down the street. That was fun.
I'm not sure I go back that far.
I do. All right. You all set?
For those of us who have gardens and large properties in Sterling with the cardboard issue, we use the cardboard for walkways for our garden. It will, it will decompose and you, the bigger the, the stack of cardboard you have, the less weeds are going to come up. So think about recycling in a different way other than throwing it away.
Yep. Good point.
All right. So back to, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make that motion. I want to, also thank everybody at the fair one last time. I thought it was a terrific success and we had a great weather as well. So after my two cents, I now make the motion.
John did a fabulous job in the booth.
No, I don't.
Had power.
I had power.
I know.
I had some power.
Second?
I will second that motion.
All those in favor?
Who, who?
Smith and I.
France and I. Thank you all.
You all. Thank you all.